Good evening. Tonight we have Richard Block here from the Department of National Auditors.
Good evening. Yes, Richard Block here, I'm a senior manager with the Department of National Auditors, we serve as the internal order of the school district. We've been in that role now for about three years. Don Hoffman's a partner. He has another meeting, he would also have joined us this evening, he has another meeting, so he's covering that other meeting. So we've performed the annual risk assessment. The district normally perform that during the spring each year. Obviously due to the pandemic schedules, many schedules have been adjusted. So we did, we performed the review, the annual risk assessment throughout the summertime. That review is a follow-up on previous reports, as well as talk about key changes that take place at the district since our previous risk assessment. The other area review is a detailed testing, one of my areas we care as well, which I'll talk about, cover that toward the end of my presentation. Hopefully you've got an opportunity to receive the report itself. It stays as a draft through tonight's meeting and we'll finalize the report for this evening. And what we've got in the report itself, it follows through the same format as we've had issued previous prior years. As mentioned, adoption information in the first couple of pages. And then I just want to, on page four, you'll see the chart in the middle of the page there. That speaks to the two reports we're following up on. We'll follow up on a previous risk assessment report from the district in June 11th. And then the redefined procedure report, which is related to payroll, dated March 18, 2019. We met with the audit committee back in January, where we did a detailed review related to facilities and credit cards. Since that was issued within about six months of us doing fieldwork, we usually give the district at least a year to address those recommendations. So the report recommendations from the January report will be followed up in the next risk assessment. And then it talks about the corrective action plan, which is a requirement as well, which I'll uncover at the end of the presentation. Following that, pages five and six is the risk assessment table. And it shows the key areas that we covered during our risk assessments, and some processes as well. And then the data detail testing. So as we perform some detailed testing in different areas, this will fill up with more information. And also be some changes possibly with control risk. Which usually for us to go from a monitor risk to a low risk, usually requires us to do some follow-up review of any recommendations to make sure basically the testing that we do covers and confirms that the good process and procedures internal controls that we expect in place aren't that in place and designed accordingly. So you can see here, we have got a couple of ends that went down to L on page five related to cash and bankrupts, and then the payroll as well. There was still a couple of open recommendations for payroll, but the district did a good job closing the jar of recommendations from that before date, March 18, 2019. Hence, three of the ends down to L. One we need to monitor, which there's a couple of recommendations, which I anticipate to close out next year. And then what we've done is we provided on pages seven and eight, are key changes, things that take place in the prior year. You should be familiar probably with most of these items. Talking about even terms of things that may have changed, whether they're restating. One of the things I want to highlight is part of this year, talking to districts, was the challenge with trying to follow your normal protocol and processes, particularly related to act sign-off and verification of receipts and goods and services and such. So many districts had to make some adjustments. We just want to make sure that those adjustments still kind of follow and still maintain good internal controls and proper procedures related to sign-ups. Particularly you had more sign-ups to be done on hard copy paper and the absence of people coming into the buildings. Getting those sign-ups, a lot of districts didn't, they just kind of emailed and other documents that would help verify, so that those stuff comes from good services. Hence, move forward with any other pay, as well as any other type of activity, like sign-ups on, we had some electronic documentation to support that. So that's a key item we have followed up on. The district also had utilized a wing cap for billing and collection activities. They'll see some efficiencies there related to retirees. Particularly with a lot of clients, the number of retirees have been growing. So the number of billings and collections that take place actually also increases. So that'd be a good way forward for that as well. And several IT items as well on page eight. And following that, we've got recommendations, two categories. Open recommendations, start on page eight. And as you can see, we have numbers. There's ten recommendations that are open recommendations, but over the ten, five are new items with some considerations that goes with the district, whether it be operational efficiency or strengthening internal controls. And five of those ten are open recommendations from the prior year. And then followed by those open recommendations, we've got closed items, which begins on page eleven. And run through page sixteen. With the last page seventeen, are recommendations that we're going to follow up with next year because they were brought in as a follow-up for new facilities. So they were brought in the report from January 2020. So total closed recommendations, we've got fifteen items from the closed and two items from the not reported, giving you seventeen out of a total of twenty-five, which were open from the two reports that we followed up. So very good job that the district is being accurate with addressing and closing out recommendations. Any questions related to any of the findings, comments, key changes? And the, so next steps would be, the district prepares a corrective action plan, which will speak to those ten open recommendations in terms of a plan to address such recommendations. And that would be board, that's required of the board approval as well. And the district has nine days from the date the board accepts our report. So generally, the next upcoming meeting or two, where the report will be accepted by the board is part of a agenda item under board, part of the reporting. And the district has nine days to submit the corrective action plan to the state. And then the next thing to follow, a couple was consideration for a detailed review, which is one of the area review each year, one thing we require to perform. And we're thinking, we usually look at key processes and procedures. And if we haven't performed the review yet, the benefits area. Couple reasons, one, there's obviously a sizable portion of the budget. And another is the complexities related to managing and monitoring changes, to enrollments, to dependence, and reconciliations against payroll, to deductions, any of those refineries, any contributions. So that's a key area, so that's the area we suggest and recommend for detailed testing for this year. That make sense as we move forward with that and engagement related to that area? Thank you. Thanks, goodnight.
We're going to move down into the audience because, right, Mr. Grillo, you've got a...
I think so, yeah. We might have to get a pointer.
So... So tonight, Mr. Grillo is going to provide an update on where we are with the bond. We've been working, I should say, he's been doing most of the work. Meeting with our administrators after meeting with teachers to present, so we can present to you the current status of the work.
I can dish it, right? Thanks.
Yes. It was very muffled before, it was hard to hear.
Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to, tonight was asked to give you guys a brief update as to where we are with the bond projects. So far, we've received SBD approval and we bid out the masonry work at center and all of the HVAC work at center as well. So all the work scheduled to take place at center as part of the bond referendum has been bid out. The bids have been very successful and we've come in well on the budget. Unfortunately, due to the nature of the project, a lot of that work will take place in the summer of 2021. The next phase we've been really working on is a lot, the bulk of the projects at the high school. I'll walk you through a couple of them now. We've gone through several meetings by Zoom, back and forth, through the management PDF and email to take place, now with the coaches and the athletic director to walk us through some of the things. And here is where we are with the... Alright, so here is the layout, proposed layout of the entire athletic complex. No rivers down here. This is the tech ed building, and then the west. Can I stand away, you guys can still hear me?
Sure.
So it's a full-size, four-hundred-meter track. It's actually four hundred, I think sixty-three meters around. It's an oversized track, so we could really fit all of the stuff we have talked about. New bleachers, eight-hundred-and-eighty to eight-hundred-and-ninety-seat bleachers with the press box centered in the middle of the press box. There'll be a full concrete slab underneath the bleachers for any kind of loose miscellaneous storage and stuff. Inside the oval of the track will be the multipurpose field, which will house boys and girls lacrosse, soccer, and football. Over here is field events for track and field, which is your discus and your shot put, your high jump, field event will be over near. Long jump, triple jump at this end of the field. And then we also have the varsity baseball field and varsity softball field. Each field will have dugouts on the home side for the boys and the home side for the girls will also be a storage facility within the dugout. There will be a batting cage for the softball field, as well as the baseball field. And then there'll be warm-up locations for pitchers to warm up for both softball and baseball, two, one for each team. We will also have two new scoreboards. We're going to remove the scoreboard of the existing building. We're going to put a small scoreboard that's going to be mounted to the press box that'll be used so the visiting team, I'm sorry, the visiting team can see the scoreboard in a football game or lacrosse game, as well as that'll be able to do softball and baseball field, keeping track of scores and innings and runs and that kind of stuff. The main scoreboard will be at the west side of the field, directly across from the bleachers, at the far end here. There will be, as we know, ten stadium lights, one hundred feet tall, to give us proper lighting throughout the entire complex. Seven of them will be located around the outside edge of the track. But because we're so close to the west here, one will be located behind this dugout, one will be behind this dugout, and one will be, the third one will be behind the scoreboard on the west side of the field. Access to the site will be this way. It'll be all brick pavers. And it'll be a brick paver walk all the way, and I'll show you this in a couple of minutes, where the new bathrooms will be inside the tech ed building. As well as going all the way to the bleachers here will be brick pavers. I know they were talking about maybe a buy a brick concept. What I think we'll do, and what we've done in other districts, we'll have the contractor lay out all of the bricks, all the brick pavers. They'll be different sizes, so if you want to do a large brick or a small brick, lay them all out with no wording. Then they will provide as part of the bid, an additional set of bricks that we can use. So over time, as people buy them, you know, we can add them to them, we can take out the old brick, put in a new brick with the name on it, but not have to the stress of having to get it done all at once because they'll have a half-finished walkway. So usually what we're going to do is we'll put the sub-base down and then a lot of the pavers down. And we'll have the contractor, you know, with the schedule to start still in March of 21, hopefully we start that process of the buy a brick. And maybe as we get them, we'll turn them over to the contractor and start to add them as we go throughout the whole project. But I don't want the board and the school to feel rushed like, oh my goodness, you know, what if we don't finish the project by the end of the summer or the middle of the fall? We'll have extra brick onsite so we can kind of swap those out. You really wouldn't know the difference. There'll be two large brick piers with an arch over the top, you know, whether it's a East Rockaway or Rocks. That'll be the entrance to the site. It will all be accessible for an ambulance to get onto the site as well. We'll add additional outlets over here. So if you want to do some sort of a concession stand, whether it's temporary or permanent in future time, we'll have outlets throughout here. We'll also have outlets along the fence line here for common start and stop for the track and field events. What else did we talk about? I mean, we did go back and forth a lot with the different colors, with the black and the orange. The coaches' boxes were white. We then switched those to black at the result of our last meeting.
I know that one of the trustees had asked about painting over some of the areas so as not to confuse them. I had sent that question to you, if you could just respond.
I talked to the manufacturer, and a lot of times districts, they put a very big elaborate center logo that when they're cutting through the fifty-yard line, boys lacrosse, not too long ago it was switched, they made it, it's got to be a continuous line. So some districts ghosted or some painted in. And it's only a four-inch line by the width of the logo. They weren't too keen about, like, for example, if you wanted to get rid of this orange, so it's green for first base. They weren't too keen on that because you're going to have a six-foot wide by about a thirty or forty-yard long path that when you start to spray it and paint it every year after year, you just really start to muck up and duck up the infill, the sand, the rubber. So they don't recommend that. So I don't know if we want to just, then we talked about maybe from here to here, make that green instead of the orange. So the orange goes around the entire field with the exception of this section here. We do have time for that. I mean, we don't need an answer like that until we go out to bid, which would be like in the, you know, in the new year, so we can still play with this a little bit. But they don't recommend painting large areas like that with a different color. So that's something we had talked about. We added the rocks in the black with the white outline to match the end zones. Those are the behind, and then we have the ER in between the mound and second base. Any other questions on this guy? So in the tech ed building, this is, so this will be the field over here. And these are the parrot doors that are directly across from the gymnasium. This is the driveway that goes to the back main parking lot. We're going to take away the entire middle section with the exception of the existing tech office that's in the state. We're going to gut that area and add a full-size handicap bathroom, single stall, and then three more single-stall bathrooms within this center cluster. Right now, what's in there is an old boiler room that's doubled the storage, and it's a boys' multi-stall toilet. I'm sure you guys know that there's only a boys' bathroom in the tech wing, and back by the family consumer science is only a girls' room. So this will become four single-stall toilets. Door 101 will be open during outside events, so the community can use that. And then if there's never need to go through, they can continue right through through the existing parrot doors. I shifted the door to the weight room down a little bit to give us a little bit more real estate. But during, let's say, a Saturday of a football game, this is open. This door will be locked, the door into the weight room will be locked. So there will still be no way to get into the tech room or the fitness center. This whole area could be open to the outside community to be used during, you know, Saturday, after school, practices, whatever. And it also gives now both boys and girls inside the entire tech wing, you know, a bathroom.
And those will be gender neutral?
All four gender neutral, one unisex, handicap, and then three single-stall. And then we're able to fit a small little mechanical room that'll have a slop sink and a couple of little panels and the pumps that were in that existing building. These are the two science rooms up on the second floor, room 215 and 213, and the large prep room in between. At our last meeting, we met on Monday. We went through a couple more changes here. What I think we're going to do is make this into a general storage room to the chemical storage room, I'm going to convert this into a tech. So we're going to increase and improve the ventilation in this space. So now we have one room here that's going to be, these are two-person movable desks. A little bit more flexibility inside the space. We turned this into a large science prep room so we can get five teachers in the works room here. And then in room 215, or 213, we originally had it set up with basic tablet armchairs, chair and desk for the students, and then fixed lab tables. But when we walked through some of it, you really start to get a little tight in here in between this workstation and this workstation. It's only thirty-eight inches. And that's because the overall width of the room is only twenty-two foot three. So it gets a little tight. So I think we came up jointly that we're going to pretty much mirror this image in this room. So we're going to get rid of the fixed tables. We're going to go with built-in sinks around the perimeter, but with movable, flexible, two-person tables in this room as well. So there'll be more of a multi-use flexible space. And then the addition that was built back in 2015, as the physics in the chemistry room, these will be more of a general-purpose, multi-use type science, like science, earth science, bio, those kind of things.
There'll be like a, would that a demo table what's in front of it?
This is a, yeah, this is a movable demo table in here, and there'll be a movable demo table in there as well. So the art room, this was, this is the existing footprint of the art room now. This was way back when in the mid-2000 bond. This was the only room that we really didn't do anything with in that whole wing. We renovated the whole wing. We took this room, which is a general-purpose classroom, and we originally divided it in half. We had a kiln room and a storage room. Now we're taking the wall down between this existing art room and the old art room. And we're removing the sheeprock wall that separated the kiln room from the storage room, making this now one full-size, multi-use art complex. So we took down a wall here, so this will be open all the way through from one end to the other. We have workstations here, the kiln is located over here, and then large movable tables in the middle, oversized pull-down reels, as well as additional storage throughout the perimeter. Large sink at this end, and then a large sink that's accessible from both sides with multiple faucets. So multiple kids can clean out their brushes and wash their hands at the same time. And in this room, the science rooms and the family consumer science, they're also getting part of the new ventilation. But in those rooms, we're going to put the univents up to the ceiling level so we can maximize floor space. Because the univents are almost, they're ninety-eight inches long, and it's just too much space to lose. So we're going to get those up on the ceiling, and we'll duck them out above everybody's head so we maximize our floor area. And then in the last room that we're talking about is the family consumer science room, which is, basically we had the two doors into the one room. We have this door that's going to stay, we're blocking up this door. We're going to run seven workstations around the perimeter of the room. One, two, three, and then four along the back room. We'll have a large commercial dishwasher, stand-up washer and dryer. And then these will be flexible stainless steel tables on wheels that we can move them around the room. Full-size refrigerator and freezer, commercial-grade, full-size refrigerator and freezer. Miscellaneous tall storage cabinets. We have a sewing machine, specific to sewing machine storage. That's going to be a tall cabinet as well. Handicap sink around here, and then every other will be a general-purpose sink for each station. So each station will have microwave, oven, stove top, and a sink. And then above each, the dotted lines here, that's going to be a hood above each stove area to properly vent the complete water in these spaces.
And lots of countertop, right?
Lots of countertops. The only thing we're working on now is, the overall work that's part of this is the changing from steam to hot water for the entire, this entire complex. Trying to figure out a way where we could do some of those renovations, science, family consumer science, or art, summer of 21. I've got to just work out some stuff with the heating, with the ventilating. I got to make sure that they have proper ventilation. And you know, they're not without ventilation for a year, they have the air conditioning. And if not, that work will take place in the summer of '22, along with the rest of the ventilation and the univents. And we have to basically run an entire new hot-water piping system before we can pull the old system offline. So we're trying to work through some things. I'd love to get a couple of those rooms done this summer. So we're working on that as well, and I'll, to be continued on that. Athletic complex and the electric service upgrade is still scheduled to start March of 2021. Obviously, we're at the mercy of the bulkhead, but the bulkhead is, I believe, is starting very soon.
It started on November 1st.
Yes, and the trailers are coming in, all that good stuff, so...
I'm kidding.
I know. So as soon as that's done, we'll come in right behind them. So we're still scheduling with the contractors and the bidding timeline to be ready to go in March of 21.
In terms of like tables and materials and everything, is there, is there any references or pictures of what's going to be used in there?
In the classrooms?
Not just, yeah, in like the art room and the home and curios room and all that, is there a, if it's a mood board or a storyboard of what you guys are thinking in terms of materials? Just to kind of give us an idea.
Yeah, well, we started doing that, we've gone back and forth with the teachers, pictures of what the chairs are going to look like, with the stools, with the tops. We have that going back and forth in emails. I can get that to Lisa again so she can get it to you guys. So we both, we started doing all that as well, absolutely. Yeah, we've done that. The only thing we're not going to touch is colors. Let, you know, whoever wants to wrestle over what the colors are going to be, that's fine. You know, we'll work with you, we'll put together color boards. You know, if you need two color boards for each room, if they can choose, that kind of thing. Or we can just kind of let the art teachers have that.
The teachers have been very, very involved in the whole process.
They've been great.
And very motivated, of course. It's, I mean, what a great opportunity for a teacher to be able to design their own space, so...
Yeah, we're going to have to share with us.
Absolutely.
You know, it's Saturday, maybe one year ago that the bond passed.
Amazing.
Yeah. Year went by really fast. And now is the fun part.
Yeah, we've been working on it for years, so I'm going to be jarring.
A little bit.
We started the bond, just...
We have to celebrate that it happened, so not forget that. Questions?
Yeah, it looks amazing.
No, good.
I want to thank John because he's incredibly patient. And the emails that go back and forth between and among all of the people involved, I, it just blows my mind. And he came in on Monday so that we could meet and really sit down and look at everything that's been decided. But between the assistant principals, principals, the teachers, Jim, everybody's been involved. So it's been a very inclusive process. And wonderful for me to see how many people get to weigh in on what's going to happen. So we wanted you to have an opportunity to, and to ask questions and comments.
Yeah, it happens, why can't we stay with that field?
I know the teachers, from what Richard has said, the teachers were very excited. I know the teachers, from what Richard has said, the teachers were very excited in the science room to have another, a space where they can work, you know, with workstations for them in between the classrooms, where they can meet as a department, and you know, that's great, because that space is, is pretty horrible right now. So it'll look great for them. And I think we're also going to convert that closet into the chemical storage, which will free up the other space to be an office, because this building is notoriously short on space, meeting space, whether it be for the teachers to meet, whether it be for small or larger meetings. And so right now, there's a chemical storage area, and so that will be relocated, which makes sense. And then the other space can serve as a, just an additional small space for the building to use, a flexible space to use as needed.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it sounds great. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I hope you don't have too much traffic.
The lady goes in there. See you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Do you want to adjust the lighting so it's feel like? I don't know, not at all. I like bright lights, like.
Okay, so we're going to leave in a minute, and we'll keep that back on there.
No, now it's dark. We need the bright ones. Either of you like stagehands?
I was the lead, I'm sorry.
Oh, God.
That's too much, that's too much.
Right here. That's too much? That's good? Okay. That's good. That's good. Any questions on the minutes?
No, no.
Any questions on Tuesday's agenda? If you don't have any questions, we will move on. I asked for a question, if you want it, bomb update. And I guess now we're going to review some policies. So I know we have one of the new policies that's recommended by NISP. And when the policy subcommittee met, we had discussed, it involves the whole board, we only drew a five table in that one? Yeah. So we'll move this to the December work session. The next one is the reservation. So. So I think actually the reservation, we were just looking at one change. On a second. On the third page, in regard to the requirements. Looking to add college courses to the week. You already had dance performance. That would save the rate of 1.15. And now we have college courses. We are going to add that to this policy. Other than that, it's identical. Mary is rushing us. We have November 20, still 2020, right? Change that to November 2020, not 21. So if the board doesn't have any further questions, there's just one minor change. This, this actually cannot be. It, I don't think it can be moved to adoption. It has to be, stay under revision, under review for one month. Since I don't think it was under review, we just added it to review. It has to stay there for a month according to the regulations. And then we can move it to adoption in December. I'm pretty sure, unless it's been there.
Okay.
But I will check. Want to start on the, the next one was. Absolutely. Okay. The next one is field trips and excursions. I feel like we're looking at this for a while. So this was really ready to go for the board review back in the end month. But we put a hold in there on the field trips, and we're still looking at what type of this is to be added. We seem to be ready to go. We have the language, and in the back, we have our forms. Your request for education on field trip. The permission for fundraising.
That seems pretty straightforward.
I think the reason, just to give you a little history, there was, you know, as the district started to really move forward and have more program enhancements, we had opportunities that had never previously presented themselves. So we added the tech club, the robotics club, and our students began to qualify for different competitions. And so the question came up as to how those would be approved, how those would be paid for. Do we allow students to participate in out-of-state trips of competitive nature or an invitational nature? For instance, the Disney trip, and the trip that the band and the music department takes every year is considered an invitational, because it's not a qualifying event. It's an event that they hate to participate in. It is a competition when you get there, but it's, it's not a qualifying event that you would like Allstate, New York State, Allstate Music. So the policy was really changed to be able to include all of those options. And then obviously, certain, we still need the approval of the superintendent. Out-of-state trips, we didn't want to exclude them, but really wanted to make sure that, of course, when it says the superintendent, I also speak to the board about trips of that type, and to be open and flexible enough, depending upon the circumstances. Obviously, right now, nobody's taking any trips. And also, the board felt that it would be difficult to assume the, and we agree, not just on the speaker, to board, more than administration, especially a business official, that the costs for some of these were very, very high. So the board actually wanted the addition of the fundraising plan, so that the clubs for the departments that were running these special trips or invitationals would have a plan on how to raise the money, so that they would be, it would be equitable, and that there were, you know, make it accessible to all of the families in our school community who wanted to participate, would be able to participate, you know, with the initiative of fundraising. So Mr. Schaefer developed the fundraising plan, and you see attached, I sent it home on Friday. And so I think finally, it's ready to go. For the, in the event when we do start ten of trips, which will be great.
No, that's great. Yep, hopefully soon.
Yes, before or so. The next one was opioid overdose prevention regulation. And I think we were actually waiting for this to come back to me in time, and that is the final version. Now that you have provided. So the, let me get my copy. This is something actually Mr. Volpus spearheaded when, way back when he was an athletic director in the district, and he was really a proponent of the district, you know, as the board was and I was, and the administrators as well, you know, based on the issues with opioid abuse and overdose that exist unfortunately in our society. The state law was changed to allow districts to operate opioid overdose prevention programs. And basically, what this means is that we have, we are allowed to have trained individuals who administer NOKAN, in the event that on the school grounds, there would be a possible overdose, so that we would be able to respond to that, and then, you know, if necessary, save a life. So it's a great thing to have. Districts were given three different options to choose as to how to run a program, and we opted, we did a lot of research, St. Mr. Volpus did a lot of research, and we opted to operate a New York State Department of Health registered opioid overdose prevention program. So that is the program that's described in the policy. And then we need to have certain regulations and procedures in place. The regulations are on the back for last page. Mr. Barth serves as the administrator or the director of the program. And then, you know, there are regulations that we must follow in order to keep the NOKAN on, you know, on site, how it gets stored, how it gets documented.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. Fortunately, we have never used it, and we've had this policy in place since 2016. So we're very pleased we've never had to use it, but we're also glad that we do have a number of people trained, I'm trained. Mr. Barth is trained. Mr. Rinn, our health teacher, is a certified NOKAN trainer, so he's run NOKAN trainings within the district for all the administrators. Our nurses are trained as well, and a number of other staffs. So it's, obviously, we hope it only affects, well, we hope we never have to use it, but, you know, it is something that was supported by our nurses, you know, as well as our health teacher and the administration. So this was, the change was, let's see. Again, we use the school board's policy service, and it's great, because they alert us to any changes in the law that need to be reflected in our policy. And so they redeveloped and reissued the policy with the regulations to reflect updated guidance from the state education department. So that is, that was the purpose of updating the policy. And our attorneys reviewed it as on the advice of NISP, and it's, you know, they've given us the nod, a blessing, to approve the policy now. And this policy was, this policy has been under review, so we can adopt it on Tuesday if the board agrees. The other policy, the reservation policy, is just going to be put up for review technically. So we will keep it up for review in case anyone has any questions about it, anybody from the community, and then we can adopt it in December. It has not been put up for review yet.
Correct.
So if the board is in agreement, we'll move this to adoption. All good? Okay. Next one is that's going to be policy equity, inclusivity, and diversity in education. So when we met, we used, we, we, and I, for, for the one board line in the entire board, because this is so new, it is new. So we really want to go in and make sure that the example policy we have on NISP, that everything that we want, we can do, you know? And there's, you know, the right story.
So this is, this is just a sample as a reference, and then we use it as a how-on? Is that kind of it?
Yeah, it's, NISP, again, offers sample policies. And so we can certainly, there can certainly be areas of the policy that you can adjust and adapt. My advice would be, you know, depending on what the area is, that we would then share with our attorneys for, you know, final, before we finally would adopt any, you know, any policy that we make changes. I think it's only going to be the sort of policy here. It's definitely, was, unless I had to, we have it definitely, yeah. So we'll make sure you get the right one. I don't think the intention was for us to review it tonight.
Right, yeah, yeah. Definitely want to look at this very, very carefully and make sure that, you know, we're working on that. It's good.
NISP has, I know we received an email, you may have as well, on the 16th of November. There's another equity and inclusivity webinar.
So I have a question about that. Do you happen to know if the webinars are available after the time?
They are.
Because I, unfortunately, that might be confusing. And I can't take off that period.
But you do have to register, so if it's, if it's a registration one, if you email Mary, she'll register you, and then they'll send you a link after the webinar is overviewed if you would.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. So you just have to register first. And I'll make sure if this is the whole policy, and we'll send it home. We talked about possibly, because the policy work is long and hard. The board does choose to review it together. We could possibly set up a separate meeting to do so, because it's just hard during the work session. It just requires a lot of read-through and a lot of comments and.
I think that's a good idea. Get a separate Zoom or whatever, be great, later meeting.
So the policy subcommittee can make that, set that up, and possible.
So this piece of paper is different from the actual policy that has been sent over? So this piece of paper is different from the actual policy that has been sent over?
Um, I left my copy.
Can I go online and just look for it? Would it be?
I think we sent it home in the board update. And I, for some reason, I remember it being a lot thicker than this.
Yeah.
But it could be that my copy was.
It's been single sided.
Single sided, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, maybe that's the difference.
I remember us commenting this, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's more hanging.
Okay. I'll make sure you get the full policy sent home on Friday.
You know why I think it's not on this one? It's the key equity definitions and resources.
Okay.
Okay, next is an update on COVID-19.
So we just wanted to update you a little bit on our last closure that we had last Thursday. We received the call late on Wednesday night. And again, I really wanna compliment everyone, our administrators, our teachers, support staff, because everybody just pivoted seamlessly. By the time, you know, people were notified, we had a little problem with Connect Ed that night that we are, that we rectified. But teachers got the message at about 9:15 or so, and they were just terrific. It was seamless. And that's really a credit to everyone, to the administration, for their leadership, and to our teachers for their flexibility in being able to just, next day, move to remote learning. And of course, our families for also being so supportive and understanding of what we need to do when these things happen. We, the building was open, so most of the administrators, all central office was here that day. And Ms. Hecht, who's my partner, and Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Healy, the four of us worked with the Department of Health. And this was a little more complicated because obviously students were impacted this time. So it was a great learning experience for us. We learned a lot about how the Department of Health makes the determination of close contacts because it was different. The previous case was different because there was no student interaction. However, here, this was someone who was in classrooms with students. And we did learn that the barriers, although, you know, the barriers are used to keep kids safe and to block, you know, transmission and interactions between students directly, the Department of Health does not take the barrier into consideration when determining who's a close contact. So I think that's a really important factor, especially as we start to move forward and think about what, what our current instructional model looks like. And if, if we were going to consider, and I know we're gonna talk about that as well tonight, to make any changes. So we really had to, Mr. Schaefer was in classrooms, in the faculty room, all over the building, measuring with his, I'm sorry, measuring tape. So that we could be accurate in terms of reporting to the Department of Health who may or may not have been involved. And we did exclude the children, students, and have them quarantined, as well as the support staff that were in some of the classrooms with really a true abundance of caution because of particular circumstances in certain classrooms. We just felt it was the right thing to do and to take the most cautious approach. So all in all, there were 25 students involved. There were, I think, eight staff members involved, which was great because, you know, initially, we thought that every staff member would, might have been considered a close contact. And the problem that that presents is that when you have a lot of staff members or faculty members who are, who must quarantine, it creates a coverage issue in the building. And I believe certain other districts have experienced that, that when a large number of teachers were close contacts, those classes could not be covered. Because I think every district on Long Island has a substitute problem. And even though the teachers can teach remotely from home, we still need to have supervision in those classrooms to be present, to supervise the students. And that, that's where the problem comes in. We do have to use teachers to, teachers do a certain number of coverages. And then over and above that number, we pay them. And we can do that, but that, you know, that's an imposition on teachers' time because then they're giving up a free period. But we do do that when we have to with emergencies. So we were really, we felt very fortunate based on the circumstances. And I think how really in-depth we went in terms of actually measuring. Mr. Schaefer spoke to every single staff member that was involved just to make sure where everyone was sitting, how far they were. And basically, the formula is six feet or less and 10 minutes or more. And that, and that constitutes a close contact. We also learned a contact of a contact is not a close contact. So someone who, you know, we've been getting a number of cases where staff members, family members have tested positive, they're considered a close contact. They live in the same home, and those people need to quarantine 14 days. So that has also impacted our staffing somewhat. And then we have people who tangentially may know someone. My husband's colleague tested positive, so the husband is a close contact. But you're not a close contact because you're a contact of a contact, so you can come to work. But sometimes people go to the walk-in clinics and they explain the situation. And again, everyone has their own guidelines. And so they take an abundance of caution approach. I think that's gonna be the most overused phrase of 2020. And they will give COVID tests and then ask people to quarantine until the second COVID test comes back. Or they've actually asked people to quarantine for 14 days, even though they may have two negative COVID tests. We cannot override medical directive because we're not, you know, we're not a doctor, we're not a medical organization. So we do follow these guidelines, whether it be from the Department of Health or, you know, a healthcare provider who makes that determination. And we have to accept what, you know, what's, what people are telling. So it's become a daily issue. It takes up, I'm not complaining, but just to see how things have shifted. It really has become almost my full-time job, because fielding all of these, not just questions, but cases that have come in, pretty much we get at least one a day within the district. And of course, as you know, I've been reporting to the board the number of cases that are being reported in other school districts. Our neighboring district has two schools closed, and they just have over 100 students quarantined in a high school. And so there definitely is an increase, there's an uptick. I think last week, I was looking at the positivity rating on the state website and New York State at Long Island in three days had gone up from 2.4 to 2.9 to 3.4 in three days. So that's a pretty big uptick. I know the governor just released new guidelines for kids and bars and restaurants and Thanksgiving, our Thanksgiving tables, which interestingly enough, which just only leads us to believe that things are not getting better beginning. There's a much more concern. So as I said, we feel very supported by, the Department of Health is terrific. I don't know if I have anything, I can add or no?
No, I, I thought the time spent was a very thorough process and educational to understand how they perceive the things that we put in place and that we step to be taken. But, you know, I think we should be confident in what we've done and, like, our environment is a favor to be made. And then the next step is exploring and contacting what they're putting in front of. And we're fortunate to be in this situation with that so far. But it was an educational experience, and it just reminds me, as of all of us, that we measure our risk for reasons, and we should follow that and minimize the risks.
The risks, and we were thrilled that we were able to just close for one day and review. That was the best part.
And that was the 25 and eight, 25 students made today, no one else positive, correct?
Correct, so far.
I mean, I'll call it close, obviously, working. So that's a good thing.
A parent had actually reached out to me because his son was in one of the classrooms. And he was obviously upset or whatever. I explained him, every protocol and everything that was put in place and how hard everything has worked. He did bring up a good point. And he did say, you know, I understand all of that and I do appreciate it, but my son has special needs and he is a higher-risk, you know, kid. Wouldn't it make sense to add temperature checks or something like that to prevent a teacher or someone else? Does that even, would you even consider that to make sure that the teachers or the staff has a temperature scan prior to coming to school? Because that was that one parent's major concern. And I basically told him that we looked at it, I remember we discussed it, and that it was not required by the CDC, is that correct?
Yes.
I remember that that was mentioned. So I said, you know, we did look at all those options, but, you know, at the same time, it's, it is a special situation, it's a little more unique than, than most others. So I heard it loud and clear, and I certainly respected everything he said. I believe I gave a good answer of why. But is there, is there something else with an uptick or anything else? Is there anything else I'm asking, I'm asking? Is there anything else that we can potentially add or are we doing everything in our? Because that's pretty much always stated, that we've looked at everything, we've dotted every i and crossed every t, and there's not so much more that we can do. And then he said, then B, well, what about temperature checks? Everyone, wherever you go, they have to check their temperature. And I said, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up to the board and to you guys and see what you think.
Yeah. And that's a really great question. So as far as, it's something we absolutely can revisit. We can have that conversation with our doctor, school doctor, and our nurses. And this particular person who tested positive was asymptomatic. And so that's the problem.
Right, you don't know, and I got it, of course.
So that we would not have picked up this case. And I'm not gonna go into any more detail, but, you know, going for the test was kind of a fluke. And now, as they're telling you on the news, they're saying you should just get tested for the sake of getting tested because people are, so many people are asymptomatic. And they are, CDC is encouraging people to just go.
That's true. You can't tell. You would love that if you have a fever, we've both had fevers, we know what that feels like, you're staying home. I mean, you can't go to school. You know, I mean, I don't know. I think, I think it's a big waste of time. I do it personally every day, Laura, and it's a waste of time. I mean, asymptomatic is the biggest problem. You're asymptomatic, but now I am, you're not, you get it from me. I mean, it's very tough, very tough to do.
I mean, parents are expected and staff are expected to take their temperature at home and to answer the screening questions.
I mentioned that as well.
It's the honor system.
Right.
And we would hope that parents are doing that. I do, I will tell you that from, this is why I'm so busy, because so many, and Jackie knows because she's tracking, Jackie has to track all the feral aspects of all the people that are involved. Every single staff member who has had a symptom gets it checked out. And then they go wherever, to their doctor, to an urgent care facility, and they are tested immediately. And so I, I really have to commend our staff from monitors or teacher aides, our teachers, administrators, anyone who's experiencing any symptom immediately gets checked. They don't come to school that day, they go get a COVID test, and then they follow the directions, which sometimes do wind up saying, you have to quarantine for two weeks even though you have two negative COVID tests. But I don't, I haven't seen anyone who's come to work ill. So anyone with symptoms, I think our, our screen there is working.
Right.
Because people do take those questions seriously.
No, I mean, it's, again, I was, I was very clear, not in our defense, but in letting them know that there's, there's nothing more that we truly could have done or that the ministry hasn't already done or thought about. So it was just, it was just a concern that was brought to me, and I just wanted to bring it to you, and that's it.
I imagine. It is very upsetting. It's a very, very difficult time for everyone.
Sure.
There's a lot of fear, you know, rightfully so. People are concerned, especially if you have, you know, fragile, if you're a fragile individual with other medical conditions. It's good to be very careful, and the questions are really good ones. We certainly can revisit that with our nurses. I know that our nurses were very strong about not taking temperatures because of that reason.
Right.
And feeling that, you know, again, the logistics of funneling kids into the building every morning.
Oh, no, I would be.
Taking a temperature would, would be difficult. And then, you know, just to refresh your memory, the issues that we had with taking temperature, the main one was that it has to be done in a confidential manner. So we can't, like, when I go to the nail salon, they take my temperature in front of everybody else at the time. But here, we can't do that. So we would have to put kids in a room, they would have to walk in, go in a room, and we would privately scan there.
Yeah, yeah, I believe what.
Oh, you got, those are very expensive.
Yeah. And they don't know where you are. I have to kind of, I still, I'm going to leave that according to my head. So I have to redo it three times before I can use it. I hope that I can show you.
Yes. So, you know, there would be a confidentiality issue, and then there would be a time issue, and then there would be, who would be the people who would be authorized to take the temperature? Because you have to get close enough to scan it. And so it would really only be the nurse, the nurses, you know, we'd explore who else the monitors do, it could be, you know, it's not.
Yeah, no, I remember all very, I mean, it's, it's not so much of a recommendation as it was, it was more of a, I'm just relaying the message.
Yeah. Well, thank you, and thank you for explaining it. And I believe the parent did speak to Mr. Healy as well about this concern.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that.
And I was aware of it too. Any questions? I do wanna take this opportunity for the three people that are watching, thank the community. And please thank your neighbors when you see them, because I really think that up to this point, I mean, we don't know what tomorrow will bring, but I, I feel that it's because this community is cooperating and the community is following the guidelines. You know, we've not had really any student cases. And so that's a credit to the fact that people must be doing what they're supposed to do. They're keeping masks on and, you know, using social distancing. Either that or we're very lucky. I like to think that, you know, every day, we get at least five schools that are closing that have student cases. More student cases, we're hearing, than faculty and staff cases.
Yeah.
We're, we're pleased, you know, please. I know the holidays are coming up, and I will speak about this next week at my board, at the board meeting, a letter will be going out tomorrow to families with the new revised travel guidelines that the governor put in place. It's no longer 14 days of quarantine. But as the holidays are coming, we do encourage people to be, continue to be cautious and follow the guidelines because people will be traveling and will be with other people. And obviously, the risk is going to be higher for transmission. So people will get that letter tomorrow with the new guidelines and actual document from the Department of Health that outlines what people will have to do if they do choose to travel, not to the contiguous states, but exempt to Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Vermont, not contiguous, but Vermont, Pennsylvania, this is a, yeah, from, from those restrictions.
Next step was equity staff and survey results.
So fourth began, we began speaking. So fourth began, we began speaking last month about when things were really going well, about the possibility of bringing more students back in and increasing capacity. I would say that things have changed drastically from the month ago. And we did, we did issue a survey for all of, all employees in the district. About 160 people responded and we asked how people felt about bringing more kids back, how they felt safe at school, and, you know, how to express any concerns and to give us their thoughts. We also consulted with our school doctor, Dr. Addis, about our current instructional model. And Dr. Addis was adamant about not making any changes at this time to our instructional model. Said if you had asked him a few weeks ago, pretty much at the time that we were discussing the possibility of expanding, he said, I would have had a different answer for you. He said, but basically what I'm seeing in other schools around Long Island and New York City and what he's seeing in his own office, he said he would not recommend bringing more students back at this time. He feels that it would definitely increase the risk because of the capacity. And that really is where some of the concerns that people expressed was the issue of ventilation. Now that the cold weather is coming, people are opening their windows and using the air conditioner to circulate air. But with cold weather, you know, it may not be as feasible to keep the windows open and increasing capacity in a closed room that doesn't have, you know, maybe the state-of-the-art ventilation systems. Schools are old and we know that because we're getting a new HVAC system. That at this time, and based on, again, what we're hearing in the uptick, we're really not recommending that we increase capacity. And I think that was the biggest concern that we all all feel.
Mrs. Heck, can we talk a little bit about reconstruction? You know, I think it's different at the different levels. In the high school, as we all saw, we didn't have very much mobility, I should say, for example, devices, with the new construction at the lower secondary level. I can bring more students back to the climate and transition faster. Class has, you know, compounded this level of concern and risk. At the elementary, we have in three, we have in each building, two of those grades fully in their classrooms and two other grades in the building split between their classroom and another location. So there are all the students in the building, not all together. So there are a lot of frustrations with the way that's working. With those students, with either teacher has to dare to go back and forth in their classes. So there was a strong desire to get those students into the classroom and together for instruction. But again, there's, as we go through the cold weather and, you know, the classroom sizes, you know, it poses, you know, a challenge. That side, that side, that side, that's what we've been, that's the core part of our our hopes to get those students. And then of course, we go to six, we've got a hybrid model and ideally, anybody would be in, but that's just. Hard to do what these sectors, but it seems that we can challenge particularly, you know, they are so young. And we have a lot of candidates that are working or are looking to jump. You know, I think it's working, but it's definitely struggling. There are favorites who feel that it's a challenge. A lot of Chinese students, they need to ensure that they're on, they need to ensure that they're engaged in what they need to do. And it's great, you can assume that they're a little bit older, that they're, and they're able, but they can be a little less supportive. And so depending on the whole structure and, you know, students, those that students back as well as the students at home, there will be challenges going on. But it is a challenge. So it's a challenge for everyone.
Sure.
But, you know, wanting to get started, right, it certainly poses, there's some concerns that still have that. But day to day, it's a challenge. Teachers are trying very hard to connect those students at home, engage them in the classroom. It's a lot of extreme time for students to be engaged that way. So, you know, we say it's working, but that's really what sort of asterisks that, you know, it is working. We're moving along, but it's a challenge. And and, you know, it's hard to, for those students.
No, the risk is that at the secondary level, as Mrs. Heck said, you you could, right now, the teachers have their five classes and of course, there's passing time in the hall and passing in the hallway is pretty, pretty empty. I I have to say, the kids can actually socially distance. When you go back, if you're young enough to remember what passing time is like. So you have the children in much more closer proximity and the teachers will then be seeing, if you have an average of 20 to 25 kids in each of your five classes, you're interacting with over 100 students a day at a time. And Mrs. Gilli can speak about what the spacing would look like if we brought everybody back. Because she's been measuring the buildings, she's at 6:30 in the morning, human before the kids arrive.
What what we did or what we started with, the last slide, was we started looking at collapsing the classrooms. We need four grades, four classrooms in the center and three in weight in, in the middle. Three grades in which there's split between the classrooms. So we thought, well, we want to start looking at bringing students back. Let's first look at collapsing the classrooms down the school. These are what some of the issues we have there. So I did, Mrs. Gilli and I, we went around, we measured, removed, you know, I I'm going to effectively set in the classrooms up. I know we pay for catching, we see it because each classroom has four cases, different issues and the small boards are in different places and the desk sizes for the teachers are different. Some teachers require two desks, some teachers, there were a lot of variables in each situation. What I did find was it could collapse, but I could not collapse them under the guidelines that were currently used. So when we set up the kid, the way we set up the elementary, we used, if you recall, we talked about this so much, the six-foot distance between the desks. And was it six foot from edge to edge or was it six foot onset? And the guidance was not clear. It just kept saying six feet. And there was no clear interpretation. So what we did is we used six feet edge to edge on the desks, side by side, back to back. Ultimately, actually, read age before school opened, originally when they said that was correct, they changed it. I think they changed it because many school districts had already done it for a small distance.
It was centered somewhere.
Onset, which is very important between the desks, right? Because the desks are too big. So what we did is we calculated, okay, what could we do in the classroom? There was no way we could keep the six-foot separation edge to edge. We had to go down to a six-foot on center and in many situations, we couldn't act do that. But in several of the classrooms, we certainly could not accommodate the four feet equal six foot on center back to back. So we would have had to go maybe 30 inches, instead of 48, you know. We were short eight inches, we were short five inches. So now we were adding shields around the surface of the desks. So besides the shields between the desks that were side by side in order to accommodate it, and and we did, we made it work. I was having three students in many situations sitting side by side with a barrier in between, which we've been using throughout the district. And then because they couldn't get the distance front and back, I used the unadditional barrier across the surface of the desk, which we've seen in many school districts, that would put a barrier front and back. Certainly doesn't put a barrier side by side because it's special. It edges the surface of the desk if anything, if the child's sitting in the chair. So we could accommodate and we did make it work for the seventh classes to collapse them. But as we were doing all of this, it's just at the same time that we were spending. And then we hear that, you know, what the barriers are, making a bit of a difference to top of the class. So things have changed in the last couple of weeks. It was a good lesson, it was good exercise, you know, I can remember we documented and I know we went forward. I do have one class where I do not see how we did it, different students in the classroom. It's not just 25 in the center. Bailey getting 24, I don't see with 25, the child, I had not returned back. It was a sixth grade classroom, so at this point, I felt if we were even considering it, even better collapse the kids right? And probably ease it forward slowly, but I did it in one classroom. Then no matter what I did, I could not accommodate the classes. Again, here in the high school, we're already very cross in a lot of the classrooms. The seven, and each period is different, so it's a little difficult here. We really didn't go into mapping out the high school because each class is different.
And small. And the main, the main older portion of the high school, the rooms are very small. And then you win there larger.
I mean, I don't know how we could possibly do it here. As I said, already we've got very cross in this school, just children, and that's it. So we really did focus on, I want to train this, where we, where we were interested in and were using that, I don't know, regular things. It's just that it's more, it's documented, we know what we have to do, we have a plan. I think the changes, we think stuff to put back down again. We've got something, we really know how to cope. Whether or not this is the time, personally, I don't think so, it's, you know, not my fault.
Unfortunately, I don't think so either. Now the time is going to go off, isn't it? Now's the time, it's going to shoot up. Between the holidays, kids coming back from outlets that are now rejoined in families. I think we're risking the whole district if we start trying to put down. It's captain time, you better know. Unfortunately.
Well, that's that's what we feel is that if if we increase, the whole, all, many classes would then have to quarantine. So any class where anybody, any person was, the whole entire class could, you know, would be impacted. Because especially with the elementaries, with 20 some odd students, they eat lunch in the classroom. So they'd be taking their masks off and they would be for 40 for half an hour. So it's less than six feet for 10 minutes or more, well, you have a whole class that would have to quarantine. So, you know, that's riskier, you know, in and of itself. Because like you said, you asked if anyone tested positive yet from all the people. We have to quarantine and the answer's been no. But when you bring in more and more and more students, they may not be. So we think at this time, it's beautiful to stay the way we are. I just looked up at my emails. So we get notifications from OSIs and there are one, two, three, four, five, six districts that just within the last half hour, I have notifications of those in schools. So it's increasing. It was five a week, now it's becoming five a day. So that's, and some of these are, some of these are multiple schools within the same email. But it's, you know, it's not good. So we think what we have is working, I think what we do have is working.
Sure.
And and we did get a lot of very good feedback from our teaching staff. A lot of them, a lot of the feedback was incredibly positive. We're feeling very comfortable. We feel everybody is following the rules. We think the district is doing everything that it can to keep everyone safe. You know, however, everybody's expressing the same concerns as we all are that when you increase capacity and you bring more people in a confined space with, you know, non-perfect ventilation, that you could be increasing the risk. So we are having a parent meeting on November 24th. That will be included in my letter tomorrow night, that tomorrow, that goes home to families. We're going, Mrs. Heck and I, you know, administrators will be present. We're going to speak very little, just update the families where we are and and what the process we went through and how things are going. Go over a little bit of the contact tracing so people understand and then leave the rest of the time open for questions. We will post a question, a place for parents to, families to submit their questions on the website. So that will be November 24th at 6:00 PM. That's the 24th, is the number, right? Sir, oh, sorry, 23rd, November 23rd. That's when we go to the parent meeting. Just, we want to hear from families, what their concerns are because as as Mrs. Heck, we're writing back to a parent who expressed the concerns, she put it so eloquently. We understand that there are problems and we're going to have to look at a different way to solve them. Just because we can't bring them, your children back every day, doesn't mean we can't look at other solutions as to how best to support your your child who's struggling. And and I just thought that was perfect. So now we can figure this. And we will, we will. But that's, that's why that dialogue needs to happen because when we know what the struggles are, we can say, okay, we can't do this, but maybe we can do that. And and that's really so great of you, Doug. It's, you know, you look at a problem-solving approach. We don't want to say, sorry, can't help you, sorry, we can't do this, but maybe we can do that.
True, yeah, that's cool.
It's not fair, because we, on a society, we're doing anything that we have to do. And I wonder if there's something like a video or a comment or.
It's a great idea. It's a perfect idea. I know we do now have extra help. I think some of it is, I just read an article, it's called digital fatigue. You know, some of it for kids, they're just.
Sure.
Reaching the end of their rope, not for video babies, but.
Do, do we see a decline in like academic performance? Or anything like, are we seeing statistically, I guess I should say, is there a decline in overall performance? Or is there an incline? Is there, is it always, are we, what are the trend lines saying basically? What, is there any level of concern for that?
Well, we just administered the NWD, more recently, KPD, and that's reading a math test. And we did this, we meant to, you know, we weren't able to administer that spring, so we could inches away.
Right.
How our students are doing. We have not aligned that that with the point.
Right, and you're in the middle of it.
Yeah, the window just, the window just closing tomorrow.
But, you know, in classrooms, what teachers are seeing.
Yeah.
Sure, there are gaps and we need to see some of those.
Of course.
Here is somebody who's presented, like, writing a summary math to address a specific way. Though, if they definitely know, the students didn't necessarily get that spring.
Yeah.
To make sure that those skills are introduced and how the students are working and for success that the school knows. One other way, teachers are just thinking of, they're writing assessments, boiling home in their classrooms and just believing where students are. I don't think the students came in as low as many people out there sort of anticipated.
Right.
Which I think is testament to how we're educating, to some degree, you know, the education that's right. And also, the students are resilient, they come back and they will sort of, that was back up. But there are definitely even gaps that we need to address. So we're going to look at all the data into YouTube, you know, because that's what the needs are and try to fill it up. We've been talking to the teachers that it's not about remediation.
Right.
It's about finding out what's, where those gaps are, providing that direct targeted instruction, those skills, strategies, and then.
Well said, yeah.
Because we don't want to get caught up in what they even get and how to try to go back. We really have to keep moving forward, but combined, trying to, maybe we should hear that.
The the extra help is going to be a big, big help for a lot of those kids, just that that little bit of extra time or, it's a big thing.
And I think it's quite good to be in a school setting remotely, whether it's every other day, every couple of days. It's a hard thing to manage that.
Yeah, because they're in their house and then they're in their comfort zone and I see my own son. I mean, he pays attention to everybody, but he's like some. And I see my own son, I mean, he pays a pension, but he's, like, sometimes he'll be like, man, he's been upside down. You know, he's doing, you know, I mean, that really is where he took, he paid a pension, but it's not that easy for our child, you know, it's...
You must sometimes have distractions. You have younger, you know, if they're outside, if they're going to school today, have a discussion about his struggle. And, you know, one, it's like a 4-year-old running around and running through the room, expecting a collection, you know, and he just, there are all those little distractions that...
The dog barking.
Dog, yeah. Yeah, how many, how many things have you been, you know, with dogs, or me, and...
You know, one area that we are, I know Mr. Schaefer has brought to our attention and that we're discussing, is we don't want to penalize students because of COVID. This, you know, they are experiencing a situation that's way beyond their control. And, yeah, but kids, you know, grades can be harmful to kids, you know. And so we really are trying to support the teachers and work with the teachers to adjust. I know that they're going to be working together here at the high school to adjust the pacing. Because the teachers are very, they're very focused. They know that as of this moment, there is a region, say, at the end of the school year. And so they work at a typical pace of introducing the work. Well, unfortunately, the kids are not, they're not able to keep up with that pace. So we need to release the teachers from understanding that you can't, it's okay. You know, because they're so conscientious, and they're so focused on keeping that pacing that's really expected, it's been that way, and that's what they've taught.
Right.
And so they are having department meetings to look at what's the best way to adjust the pacing. And of course, it would help if we knew that the regions would be canceled in June.
Is there talk of that?
There is discussion about it, and no decisions have been made. The January regions, as you know, has been canceled.
Yeah.
We don't know why they were holding it in the first place, because usually it's a makeup regions, except for the English, which some districts have all kids take it in January, so they can take their AP exams in the spring. But to give the regions in other subjects was usually only given for those kids who failed it in June. And so it was very smart of them to cancel it, because there's no reason to do it. And I know that...
It would be disastrous, right? The results would be disastrous, and that would be a major concern, right?
Well, nobody took them in, nobody failed it in June, so there was no reason to take it. Yeah, January. But, you know, I know school boards in my organization, I'm not sure exactly what. My school board's position is they haven't taken a position on whether to administer it or not, but they have asked the state ed to make a decision soon.
Yeah, because you need to start to prepare for it.
Right. Now, the previous, Betsy DuVos, who was the Secretary of Education for the United States government, had made it very clear in the beginning of the school year that she would not grant any waivers this year for, that's under ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds, it's the mandated testing. Regions are part of that, as are the three, four exam. She made it clear that they would not grant any waivers. That may change now. So we're hoping it does change, because we don't think that this is a year to test children, in my personal opinion. I think this heck would agree, it's not the time.
They're being tested to somebody on the age, yeah.
Not here, with test, it's on high-stake tests.
Sure.
It's not, it's not fair, just not fair to the kids and the teachers as well. So that's my own personal opinion, I don't think those would, so we'll see.
Yeah, as those statistics come out, it'd be great to take a look at those and really see, you know, what the real statistics are for kids in terms of, you know, performing and everything else.
I think we can turn over the F on hand, we have a career. So last item, I think, is weight room access.
So I brought this one up only because I came home one day, and I had eaten sweaty, and I needed my housework and all my equipment. So I talked to my son, I go, Mike, what's going on with the weight room? He goes, I don't use it. I go, no, I don't think so, or Vito. So, I don't know, some midterm stuff went back and forth, they said, no. I said, well, let me bring it up and see if it's safe, because I know we can use gyms with masks on and stuff like that. So again, it was just an idea I brought it up. Again, I think exercising is good for people, it makes you feel, you know, it's what you need to do in time like this. Yeah. But again, it was a different question than I had, honestly. But it's more of a personal thing, that I don't want them all over my stuff. They're in my kitchen making protein shakes like that, what are we doing?
I want to go run around with them.
Yeah, well, it's the waitressing part of it is the problem. And I know that now it's getting cold out, and the outdoor activities are going to kind of slow down. So again, it's just a question of, is it feasible, is it safe? Are we, you know, follow different guidelines than actually gyms? That's basically the reason why I'm asking.
So that's a great question. And Mr. Barth had just brought it up to us, to Mr., we had a meeting, Mr. Daley, Mrs. Srio, and myself, with Mr. Barth, because he did come forward and ask if we could do the possibility. We looked at all aspects of this, as well as we have data from other school districts. And it seems right now there are a couple of weight, a couple of districts that are using, right now, it's, I don't know if we have to use a weight room. Let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight districts out of, it's not 56, because we have some elementary, about 50, that are using the weight rooms. I think a lot has to do with the size of the actual physical space and how they put the space apart. As you know, a weight room is very small. It can only accommodate, Mr. Daley, if you remember, is it six students?
About six.
Six total.
Six total. So that would be five students. Mr. Barth's plan was to bring, say, five kids and Mr. Vito at a time. But what they thought would happen is that the equipment would get cleaned in between each half hour. But the guidelines say that the equipment must be cleaned after each student uses it. So...
So like baby wipes or something, right? Like wipe, to wipe it down, you mean?
It has to be sprayed and wiped.
Disinfecting.
Yeah.
Right, disinfectant wipes, or disinfectant spray and wipe.
In fact, you have to let it sit for a few minutes, and then you have to dry it off and wipe it down. So the kids are not allowed to do it. You know, I know high school kids would probably have no problem. They go to a gym, and in a gym, you have to clean it.
Right, sure.
Even before COVID, you're supposed to do that. Because I used to...
In an extracurricular, you know, I think you have to clean it.
So I'll talk about that too. So at this time, you know, given the, there is, we would be able to open the doors so that there would be greater ventilation. But because of the cleaning aspect of it, and because the uptick again in the numbers, we really kind of just put off making the decision and felt that the other issue is that the physical education teachers have been asking, although I don't want to speak for Mr. Vito, I do believe he would be okay with being the person, but it's certainly not the teacher's responsibility to clean equipment. And I know that they make offer to do that. And so that's something we're discussing right now with the teachers' union, because we don't, you know, we don't want to go beyond what the scope of their responsibilities is. We don't have the custodial staff to do that.
Especially not if they're abused, I mean, we have to be standing in there with them. Not even for kids.
Exactly. So, but the physical education teachers have asked to use, start using equipment. Now, that is something that's in the CDC guidelines, to not use shared equipment. The state teachers have reported that the kids are getting bored and restless with doing, you know, what they've been doing, and that they really want to move on to other opportunities and possibly use some equipment and use it once, and then have it cleaned. So we are working on figuring out what that would look like. So again, is it possible we move it open? But, you know, right now, it's not advisable by the health and safety. We have a health and safety director in OSIs that we really turn to for a lot of guidance throughout Paris. And given the uptick, it's again, something that's not advisable. Could we do it at another time? I think we could. But I think we have to wait and see. I don't think right at this moment is the time to do it.
Really.
We have to do other things.
Okay, so I think promotion, if we pay any money, to discuss it.
Up to you guys, if you want to go over.